Scott, meeting you guys this evening. Appreciate everyone coming. Walt Stan and Mr. Harper with new indication. And we'll send you later.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you once again for the privilege of living in a free country. Thank you, Father, for the safety that we have here that you've provided for us through our military, through our police force, and many others that watch over for our protection. Pray God that you continue to be with those in France who've lost family members in the tragedy that has gone on there. Pray God that you would grant wisdom worldwide to be able to understand how to best handle all of this. Thank you, Father, for this time to be here in the city and to discuss the city's business. Pray God that your Holy Spirit would guide our city council and each one would know what your perfect will is in every matter that's discussed, and that things that are done and said here tonight and all that is accomplished would bring glory to you. I praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) 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 Everybody made it look out with October 20th, 2015, regular city meeting.
(Inaudible) 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 I make the most when we pass this one. (Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Well, we have a report here from interim chief pilot, and it looks like we had on this time. Would you like to explain what this is about?
Yes.
And see what we have this time? What have we got?
The first page is going to be the activity report for the month of October.
Oh, I see, okay.
From October 1st to October 31st, total of 143 citations, 172 total violations. You've got the breakdown per officer, how they were written, zero burglaries, zero dimension reports or occurrences, set to arrest, five traffic accidents, and 110 total calls for service. Now, last month, per the National Weather Service, Justin Jackson, we had 13 days of rain, measurable rain, and that kind of slows us down on our progress sometimes. So, the second page is a comparison for the first four months of the fiscal year with 2014 and 2015. We are in a little bit of decline, but different things. If we went one month, they were over short on officer, then we've had, last week was just, last month was terrible rain. We're down 29 citations for the year, which is a 4.52 percent reduction, and down 46 violations for the year. That's from July 1st through October 31st. So, we're down 6.35 percent on that item.
Thank you. Chief Reasoner, which was the fire report?
Yes, very nice. I want to say slow, which is not bothering me a bit. Since we met the last time here, fire calls were three, medical calls were 10, had two miscellaneous calls, which was a power outage, outage, which actually originated in Gullisville. Inside the city, there was nine, outside was six. A fire call was three, two of the actual fires outside, which were both in Greenbrier, and one was in the city, which just smoked up kitchen, which didn't really go nowhere. So, that was good. Total calls, just 15. Breakfast, pancake breakfast we had on the 31st, a big turnout, had good weather. After we paid bills, a little over $1,100, which most times were like $800, so good for us. Thanks for everybody that attended and came, and chili supper sometime in February, so we'll be there again. That's it, thank you.
Dave, you said something about give cards from Volkswagen, are all three of our cars in violation of the?
Right now, I think just two of them are. We got a letter stating there was another one, I looked in the file today, and they already had another letter in there for us, another car, the second one came this week. But according to the Volkswagen, they're going to give us a $500, both where he give cars, a $500 credit at the Volkswagen dealership, and then three years total roadside service for free, for each vehicle. And Ms. Kelly, I gave her all the, the VIN numbers and everything, she was going to go to the website and check all of them for me.
Is there any new activity on the DMZ?
I think, I think the plans that you, the floor plan that you presented was taken to Russell, the DMZ.
Yes, actually, I showed her, there's three different shifts, I showed it to them, and then also a faxed a copy of Russell, who's over, or is assistant director of EMS. And the only question is on the bathrooms, we got shown both enter from the bedroom, and they were at least like one that entered from a hallway where they wouldn't have to go, if somebody visits, they wouldn't have to go through a bedroom, is all, so that's very minor.
That was actually revised to where it was a jack and chil.
Yes.
And so that, that took care of that problem. Allowed them also, now we could use it as a private restroom.
Right.
Also, as a community restroom. But what, do we need to take steps in possibly figuring out the exact parcel of land which we will subdivide and, you know, that be a part of that, or do we need to be in the midst of thinking that out? Like, how much property would we divvy to them that we'll receive taxes on and stuff like that?
I would say as soon, as soon as the building is built, then we're going to try to keep as small as possible. So, depending on, I talked with, I talked with our systemic system, the city looking that up ourselves, you know, depending on how far we have to be away from the building to that, stuff like that, then we'll, we'll know exactly.
Well, that makes a lot of sense, because that way we can measure a part of line and give side guards and everything else, and we'll have the exact.
No, we do not have any measures on what we'll be divvying up against, that's your question.
Well, that would be probably less than, would be opposite of normal, but in our case, it works for our department. That's all I have.
Okay. Going to pay the zoning.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
(Inaudible) It's going to parks, Mr. Reasoner.
Christmas parade is coming up December the 4th at 7:00 PM. Lineup will start around 7, or excuse me, 5:30. King Street will be partially closed at 5:30. Highway 41 will be closed at 6:45. If the weather holds out, the Greenbrier High School marching band will be leading the parade, Christmas music, trying to work something out with Watauga, we'll get into that later. Also, that night, Watauga PTO is having a chili supper from 4:30 to 6:30, so hopefully everybody can come out and support both, support both events. Also like to thank the Ridgestop Seventh Ave Miss Church, they will be handling our cookies and hot chocolate that night, so it takes a tremendous burden off. I know Ms. Kelly and them like it, so don't have to do it. And that's all I have.
All right.
All right, just wanted to let you know that municipal permit expired on the 15th. Metro is part of our super, but we got the renewal permit that is good for three years, two days prior to that expiration. Heath cut a bunch of tree limbs out on Lake Road that were hanging over into the roadway. We have 12 locates, six sewer calls, four gas calls, two sewer inspections, five gas services installed. We had to repair a sewer riser over on that circle that was six inches below grade and running stormwater gas into the system. Keith has been working on the atmospheric survey, and it's part of the TRA situation. Keith also updated our gas maps per TRA, and he'll give me a copy of those.
So, you get busy, eh?
Little bit.
I had a question for you. I had, I had a homeowner that called me, I know they called you too, about gas leak over, like 90 acres or something, last week, I think it was.
Oh, Gordon Gray's Inn and Lakeville.
I mean, they, I understand that house has been sitting for a while, I believe, before they had purchased it, and none of the lives were together underneath the house. Is the guy understanding that correctly? I mean, that's about the city's problem, but that's pretty dangerous, I mean.
I went on Saturday night was, I went on call Saturday night over on the corner of 90 and Gray's Inn, and it was a gas leak, but it was inside the house on gas logs. That's all the thing was, there was nothing under the house.
Okay, all right, thank you. It's going to finance, Mr. Johnson?
Couple of things. Since everybody was here, started to fill out cards, those will be mailed out along with a letter, first part of December, with a return date of December the 18th. And then, I think we'll have a meeting after that to come up with our game plan for the ones that did not respond, so we have all this information in the first of the year. Money wise, on our paving, if the bid holds true to Old Springfield Highway and Nelson, we'll be at $291,000 for total payment. We spent $236,000 on barwood for all the improvements and paving on that. We had a total to spend of $317,500, so we're approaching our total there. As far as line items, the budget's doing really well. Everybody's doing a good job. That's all I got.
I'd like to make a correction on that. That was barwood, Andy's down.
Yeah, I'm sorry, barwood, yes. I didn't read on, that would have been good.
I'm just going to see the report. It's going down to part of mayor's comments, I don't have anything else. Going on own business ordinance 2015, 109, this is the ordinance to be in, ordinance 9534 zoning ordinance. Mike, you want to go a little bit? Already had the first reading on this.
Yeah, we've had the first reading on this, nothing has changed since the first reading. So, what you taught, what you gave me is part of notes, because this is actually part of the Ridgestop zoning ordinance, it has to go before the board, and we have not that for the last two months, and we will not be meeting this week. So, soon we will give out the notice to their attention, and they'll vote upon it. I mean, this ordinance is need.
Oh, sure.
This is already, we already had the first reading on October 20th, 2015, this will be second final reading. I'll make the motion to accept ordinance number 2015 109.
I'll certainly.
Call if ever say aye.
Aye.
Going to rideaway claim, under own business. Keith, are we, were that bid you on the rideaway claim?
I think Dawson talked to someone about this.
Yeah, didn't you have something to read it for me?
I did, I didn't come out and ride the roads, but it was, he broke it down, but he's got a copy following it over there. Also contacted another service, and they never would show up, so.
Couple of weeks ago, took our, one of our light towers to tow and tractor up into Parksville, and met with a guy that actually does this for a living, he's got a pretty good sized new model tractor with a side hood and all that. Anyway, he, he come down a couple of weeks ago, which they'll go, we rode the streets, roughly covering 10 miles of road, and that's obviously both sides. He tried to price this thing out, and this is the numbers he come up with. If you'll actually disregard the fourth line on his bid, if not to exceed $5,500, his bid was $5,170, $5,170 to trim basically over the town. I just wanted to get a ballpark on what we were looking to spend, I had no idea what
Yeah, I think he trimmed, he trimmed some on Lake Road?
Yes, sir, we went out on Lake Road, trimmed it where they wouldn't have no vehicles on Lake Road. We took, we rode it and good, and there was nothing hanging out over the roadway that would, you know, damage a vehicle at all, and lived good.
What I seen when I rode them, there's one tree that's pretty close to leaning over so far, right here next to the grocery store. I mean, I said or later it's going to fall, but I mean, who knows, I don't know if they... And there's also one like they don't leave the goods, the second ice car, it's hanging over real far. That was just necessary, trim those out, but I'm sure if we get ice or anything like that, it probably will fall.
I would all rather look into it.
And that's kind of what Hunter said, he, he said, right now, you don't have any leaves on trees, all the limbs are higher than they're going to be here in summer when we get a rain, so they're not as noticeable right now. Also, if you're going to do this, now's the time to do it, because you'll hear a little bit less griping, because there's not as much damage being done, debris, stuff like that, and that's all. I didn't know what we were looking to spend, if we looked at getting this done, I just was trying to get some form of number together to do every street that, they've all, you know, on lake, in the curve, that's curve, that, it's just solid right there, they need to move back, so. I hadn't been through this since y'all cut it, so.
I also did a little research as far as the codes and everything pertaining to this. If a tree is located out of the road, and it's actually on a homeowner's property, the homeowner is pretty much responsible for that tree, unless, and it clearly states that if it is going to cause traffic disruption or property damage, then we are obligated to trim them back. We can invoice the homeowner for that. I want to keep that in mind also.
Well, and I, we had to ask Keith, I don't know if this is something the city can do, this was a starting figure, just so.
Oh, I, I, I did some research, too.
I mean, do you think that's something, if we have a, hopefully no gas leaks this winter, and that's something that city workers can look at, or during the winter, their time to do it, why?
Whatever's usually our business down, that's, I mean, that's one of the, our most borrow over time and everything, except when with gas leaks, gas though.
There's another one, thank you, my number multiple, like, it's just a starting figure.
How good neighbors, a lot of them. See what happens, they look pretty good, maybe Hunter of them, but those two big trees, I was talking about, it's only I was concerned about if we had any, if we had any ice, they don't have that. What is it, 15 foot from the edge of the road, is it an actual rideaway, am I correct on that? Do you know that number?
It's 50 feet on.
So, in the center.
From the center, yes, it's 50 feet from the center.
I knew that, but I didn't know if it was.
Half the 25 feet on each side.
25.
Yeah, yeah, 50 foot rideaway, unless it's a private room, it is 30 foot rideaway.
Excuse me. It's going to Christmas party, another minute.
I believe we finally set the date for December the 8th, at 6:00 PM, I believe Ms. Kelly sent out an email to all the boards. I talked to several members from other boards and everybody, I think everyone received the email, so no one's been left out. Couple of people have asked for vegetarian meals, so I've asked them to contact you and let me know how many we need, and I'll make sure we've got that, but for any special requests, please tell the city hall for me.
All right, it's going to new business, distraction aid, please, the next bid, item A, distraction B, going to be sell the lease equipment, LESO equipment. I don't know anything about this, so. Anybody know anything about that?
Questions, I guess the inventory on the, on the big trucks is all that was.
We've got one truck that's actually up for sale, or not up for sale, excuse me, that could be surplus, but I have not, I've tried to contact Kevin the last two weeks, he has not returned my call, so I, like you said, if we're going to pursue, it was going to be our Brian truck, it didn't work out, so we can surplus that equipment, so if we want to. I know Jeff kind of had his line lines, but kind of give everybody an idea, our beginning balance when I took over was $8,550, to date, we spent $561.25, and then we just spent $837 out of that account to fix one of the LESO pieces of equipment, so roughly $71.35. I need to tweak that number, too, because I think that got corrected by the end.
Did we ever do anything by getting quotes for fencing, the fence off that over there? Yeah.
No, that's what Jeff was going to work on, and never, we just never pursued it any further.
Without some, some actual camera or some type of security, you know, some lighting and perhaps cameras, or, we've lost a couple of things, I think.
What do we need to, just get some white songs, get the fence off from the gate?
Yep. And I do believe out of that 7,100, I believe Brian had gotten some numbers for the hunger truck, it was $500 and something dollars for LED lights.
Yeah, I gave a big deal.
So, there will be a few more expenses coming out of this, $7,100. But the bulk of it was 800, and I think it was 837 on that, and they basically rebuilt one of our light towers, so it would be functional for emergencies, so we have all five of them up front.
I'd like to make a motion if we get some bids to, for fencing for the property with gate, and some type of security, whether it be lighting, camera, or whatever.
I second that.
Call if ever say aye. Who wants to go about getting the bids? Contact, who wants to do the contact? Question for you, Keith, you made that, how much salt do we have?
Oh, we've got six pallets on the way, if I'm not mistaken, and we've got four pallets in stock.
I think we got that last year.
So, yeah, about seven or eight pallets last year.
We got?
Plus, we had 10 tons of salt that was donated to us, and we went through a bit of that also.
Do we have room for any more? No?
Well, unless it's full, like where they've been brought and adopted, we don't have any room for bags of.
Well, we're changing, we're going back to the old blue saw, which is what we've used in the past, and it doesn't quite take as much, and I think we say two to $8.75 a bag, which I think we paid last year 10 or 10 bucks, something like that. We've got a really good deal, so when we went ahead and purchased seven pallets, so we have it on campus.
Okay, going to software purchase?
That's mine. We're really past due for upgrading our city software, being court, property taxes, what else is it? Accounts payable and receivables. I like, our, our software now is, it's not very user friendly, and it's probably more than 15, 12 to 15 years old now? Probably 15, we'll just say 15 years old. The girls have looked at several different softwares, we've looked at what the school has, really nice software, but I'd like to give, send out for some bids, getting replacement city software, so we can see where we're at, and I'll figure out a way to take it. But it's, I mean, we're looking at anywhere from, I'm going to say $45,000 to $50,000 to replace ours up.
How many modules?
It'll be four. It's going to be probably six to seven, maybe eight modules.
And I take it that price tag, this is what we're looking at doing to work with the police department, or just a separate program, something totally separate?
No, this is just over here. Later on, when we talk to the guys, we'll revisit the E-ticket and see if they still want to go that direction, and.
The grant that was applied, sorry, the grant that was applied for the E-ticket was not.
That's the one that got cut, they cut everything back 50% basically. So, in the future, if the LESO keeps doing well, maybe we can purchase the E-ticket for them out of, which Mr. Baker said we're allowed to do.
Will this software that you're looking at right now entertain the E ticket? Just over the 30, Mr. 5.
If it doesn't, I'm not interested in looking.
When we have seven modules or something that use the software, is it less expensive if we only do four? I'm just wondering, is it per module with graduations and cost?
You can't, but what you get into issue with is the way our software is now, is transferring data, because you, we'll be running two systems.
Our software is still over, still running on our DALLC.
This will be more Windows based, and actually, we'll go to a cloud instead, because we got our own server, so we'll go to a cloud based.
You know where it's not at.
That's what I do.
That's what I do.
And I want to go with cloud.
It gets us out of the IT and the hardware business. That's what helps us with it.
So, are you making a motion, or are you just?
I'm making a motion to get bids for replacement city software.
I'll certainly do it.
Call if ever say aye.
Aye.
All right, we already talked about paying, it's going down to schedule workshop or these things?
No, we need to vote on the pay.
Need to vote on it?
Oh, yeah, last, last month, we brought up, the two extra roads was approximately $5,5,000, but we never.
Knocked it off.
We never made a motion on it, so I make a motion, we go ahead and put the $5,5,000 for the two of the roads.
All right, make the motion, basically, make the motion, please, and click the two roads.
Okay, I make the motion to be, put $5,5,000 for the Nelson Road and Old Springfield Highway, case of.
Call if ever say aye.
Aye.
Mike, would you also might get a record about East End with the letting, what the cost would be to continue that all the way into our state limits, since we've got the number?
Well, I've got an estimated number, I don't have an actual cost on it. I want, I would prefer to actually get an actual cost on it. I would prefer to actually get an actual cost on it. But the estimated number in order to continue that on out, we'll see, I think sixteen hundred feet, which I haven't measured, but that's what was told me, was fifty-five thousand. But I'll just have to wait until I get the numbers, if you don't mind.
The street has been improved quite a bit. I, I drove through there yesterday, and we.
Fifty-five thousand is a number that you have for that most.
Yeah, it's a huge improvement. I've got a phone call from, I can't remember her name. She comes in here meeting, and she was complaining about it not going farther, and I told her, you know, it cost a tremendous amount of money. I wanted to go on her, how long it was and what it was gonna cost, because obviously we don't have the money.
We definitely improved a lot.
Okay, it's going to stay the workshop for December, or anybody want a workshop in December, or Christmas?
The date would be considered the fourteenth.
Well, I, I make a motion to, for the fourteenth, if everybody's good for it. If we don't have anything come up, we cancel.
Second, all right, first out.
Aye.
Do the citizens' comments, just say.
Well, just, do we have anything planned for a special call about the police? What were y'all thinking of that?
I think we have, we have one quick meeting to discuss. It's a little more, I mean, we got a couple things we need to discuss as a group, and then once we do, we'll, at that time, like, you know, call for a special call, maybe three days later or something. It'll be all right. You guys, we do that?
What do y'all think?
We didn't really set it till we worked, try to find out about the reservation. I found out about that today. I've shared that with, I haven't told B J about it yet, but I'll get together with Steve and B J, try to find out when we can hook up together in the meantime, you know, the free, mostly time.
April, May, something like that.
Maybe sometime this week, and we probably have a special call, maybe next Tuesday or something real quick.
Any citizens' comments, just say. Wilson?
Yeah, Wilson, well, I know a lot of times, people come in here and they've got things that they wanna tell you they don't like, and that's, but I wanna just congratulate the council on the time, the work, and the thought that you put into the road on Barwood and widening it at times, doing the sewer lines and all of that. I am very impressed. I know it, it took a lot of time, and therefore, I would like to thank you for taking that time and doing that, but you're not being paid that much to, to get part of that time. But I do have three other things to bring up. One has to with the, well, all of them have new plans and so on, really. One, if we have businesses from the council, like Mike said, we need to approve, I come up and ask Kathy, and I say, is there anything planned and so on? Now, if no one tells me that there's anything in here that we need to go over, we, I don't see any sense in us having a plan and so on. Therefore, I need to be told that, or we wouldn't cancel if we had that, whatever was brought up here. I'm not sure what it was, but some sort of amendment for us to go over.
It wasn't brought up to you because it's not fully prepared yet.
Okay.
So that's all me, that's all me.
I'm just trying to say, we're not canceling, because I told you there is nothing for us to go over.
Secondly, I understand Mike has told you, Darrell, that, that we are short a member on the, member, Walter Crest's help, brought, walked him out, has put him out. We have a wonderful committee that works hard at doing it, and everybody puts in their two cents worth in the, in the committee and does their homework. So I think you'd be glad to have it. I really appreciate all the suggestions for all the members that we have put on the committee. The last thing I would ask, and just make a comment on, I've made a comment on before, is the fact that this city, I do not believe, has been harmed by the things that it has done. It has harmed more by the things that it has not done. Like, it heard people that said, we do not wanna be taken into the city, therefore, it took no action. Other cities took action and didn't care, and took them in to their city, and such as that. And, but there are things, and we brought up, it was an ordinance, and I didn't realize that we brought up, about the front yard, parking, and selling the vehicles in the front yard and things like this. And I understand it wasn't postponed, it wasn't thought about or anything else, and even I heard it, I'm, it was a horrible piece of legislation you'd ever heard of, or ordinance. But the truth is that it had to do with property values, and if you walk around and look in a city, and we studied this, over half the cities, if it's horrible legislation, I mean, or ordinance, then half the cities in Tennessee are making horrible, horrible ordinances and that thing. All we asked for was simply to have a place, if you're parking in the front yard, to have a designated place, so it looks like it's designated. You just don't pull off everywhere. And if you have weddings or you have things, you can park all over the place for twenty-four hours. And also, if you've got cars to sell or something, so you don't try to sell so much, we had it so that you couldn't sell the five a year in your thing. You had to pay ten dollar license to sell a trailer or, or something and put up something in there. All my request is, I'm hoping, I won't even request, I just hope that sometime you will look at that ordinance again and not just throw it out the window as though it wasn't thought of. And if you want to see a place that has not any ordinances at all, all you gotta do is go over behind Hendersonville Hospital on Evergreen Road and watch and look and see what has happened there. I just do not, and we talked about this for six months beforehand and different people about, no, this is a bad ordinance, a bad thing. And they went look, some of them thought we looked at it, and, and they thought it was a helpful thing to have order on your property that was there. And I just wanted to speak to that and the reason we brought it up. And, and yet, I was just a little surprised that there was no postponing, no thinking about it. It was just totally voted down. But if that's the way you feel about it, I can deal with it, have no problem. But I think if we have a better city and more property values are better, if everybody just can't just pull up to the front door, bump over the, the gully and everything, and run over anywhere in the front yard without having a place designated with two by four words or something. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have something to say?
This is only Christmas parade. I have spoken with Chief Deputy Van Dyke and also with K D Smith, the chief of, and each gonna send us two folks down to help us work with the property.
Yeah, I think we discussed that.
Yeah.
Same people.
Get all our guys plus four more.
And our, our monthly meeting is December first, so that would kind of, instead of doing a special call meeting like we normally do, our monthly meeting will be discussing going over final details and all that. So I know Walt Hall was gonna kind of put us in a pinch, but it's usually the band and everybody, kind of see where that's at, a little bit closer to parade time, so, but thank you. Everybody else?
Actually, we got three, actually. First would be, if we're looking to pave on Nelson or on Mr. Wayne Vick, because when we looked at it before with Rogers Group, he's at the low spot, and I can't think of his address, concrete driveway, but if we paved right over that, that's gonna run back on his, it pooled it right there, so we're gonna, the time to cut that pavement out where it still flowed like it is now, instead of building it up and running back this way. What you have? Seventeen sixty-nine Nelson, before, I don't know if that's this year doing or next year, but if you'll keep that in mind.
They're gonna try to do everything, yeah, I'll definitely take a look at this.
Yeah, for it to get the pavement.
They're definitely doing everything they can to try to get him before the end of season.
I believe it married the other day when I broke down through the, anyway, other thing was on the roadway clearing, in the past, we, when Bobby White was here, we actually rented a side boom mower from National Ford Tractor, which is named something else now. The second thing, it was a gentleman I crossed planes, we hired to come in and do that also. Don't know if he's still around. I'm sure I had that name somewhere. That's still doing the option. Actually, he did, the guy, cross planes, did Ruby, John Bubba, didn't have much experience on a boom mower that I didn't either, but he actually did it, so that's another, and it didn't cost, I don't think, nowhere near five thousand dollars, but check on them, see. Third thing was, if we're selling a vehicle, is there a chance there might be another Hummer we could ask for?
We can, we can file the paperwork for one, because by a number of officers in our small department, and that's what they go for, but he did say we could file the paperwork. Like I said, it's been two weeks. Ashley, some, can I remember her last name? It's Ashley, Kevin, and then Albert Baker. I don't know if they're all on vacation, or they're just talking, so I can't get a response. I've emailed them, I've done everything, so.
Well, I, I deal with, we're winter time when, just like this past winter when it was rough, mostly ice, none of our trucks were forward or up, never had them. So we was looking, there's two out of them that are actually on good deals now. It's a, it's a skid unit, they call it, it slides in the back of the truck, open it down, mounted there if you want to, and it either carries foam, carries foam and water also. So that's what we was, if there was another one, might be available, we'd be looking to get one of them.
Can the fire department use?
As long as it's, as long as it's not, as long as it doesn't say fire department, and the chief of police knows what it's being used for, it can be done.
It'd certainly be big enough. It'd certainly be strong enough to.
Right.
To do that.
Yeah.
So we had, last year, we had one fire call that was out of seat, and on the first curve on Lake, the hard right, we went all the way around on the truck. Nobody was coming, so that was a good thing left. And we had to get a Hummer to kind of pull it out, because that was trapped.
As long as it doesn't, one of the instances you ever brought up was a fire department in West Tennessee, I believe. They had painted it red, red, and put whatever town fire department has a big, you can paint it red, you can do whatever you wanna do, as long as, as long as the police chief locates it, and it doesn't say fire department, you can do it. Mr. Wilson, I was gonna comment, I, I've talked to three of your board members on that, and they all asked me why it was voted the way it was. An issue I had with is the way it was grouped together. I, I do have a problem with pulling a permit to sell a car in, in the driveway. I understand in my yard, but I do somewhat see your point on pulling in front of the house. So I had asked them to look into that, about splitting it up and not grouping it together, because as a whole, I thought it was a little harsh on trying to ask people to take, bring pictures to City Hall, file a permit to sell a car in your, in your yard, and we don't have the manpower to enforce it, no, that was my thought, but they were confused. They thought it was broken down a little into five different ordinances versus one or whatever, it's all different.
Well, what I was surprised at is it's just, there was no feedback, period, on this, and we had studied four, and with the most lenient of all the things that we can do, try to keep the city tidy, and such as that. And some of those other things that came in there were just sort of last minute things that we weren't sold on anything, but we thought that some of these ideas would be worthwhile having in the city, so that we have some control over whether the city becomes, becomes trashier.
Yeah, and as I suggested, maybe separating a few of those and presenting in other ordinance, where maybe two out of the five that were listed, and I don't have it in front of me, I can look.
Well, maybe the one, if, if, if the council is interested in anything like that, we just need to know. We don't wanna use our time up trying to tidy things up when you are saying, we don't care, care about this, period, one way or the other, whether you, how you sell trailers, cars, anything you want to in, in your, whatever you do, as well as primary parking is what we're talking about mainly. I'm not talking about temporary parking, we're talking about primary parking in your, in your front yard. But I need, I guess we just need feedback from the council on this somewhat, whether this is something we need to spend time on. We just thought we were doing something that would be helpful and that would not really offend anybody and wouldn't cost anybody much of anything, if they just had to put some railroad ties out and show this is a parking area.
My last thing is going, Mike, I appreciate all the work you did on Barwood, man. I know you put a lot of time into us, so thank you.
I appreciate your statement. That's the first good statement that I've gotten on that, and you know how much I appreciate it.
Well, I don't know who did the work on it. I mean, whoever got the, all of you probably did, but I just, but I was, I was just impressed you talked to widen the road, because eighteen wheelers can't turn into Barwood. A lot of times it gets stuck down in there, and.
That was Mr. Ruzan's idea right there, is to get the fire truck around there.
Well, who, whoever thought of that, those wires, because I've seen trucks back all the way down, and it's backing them out, because they have no weight.
Mike spearheaded most of it, and he was on top of it pretty much every day. He did a great job, and he, he won't take any credit, but he did a great job. Spent a lot of his own time.
Well, I'll give him, I'll give Mike an answer. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
That's what I wanted to see right there, if you're ready.
Mike lives this city here, and I mean, I don't know, he does any of the work other than what he does here. I mean, he's here all the time, and I know it, he's just, I, you, you just praise me, how much time you give to the city, Mike.
You have a comment?
Yeah, Wayne Vick, I understand from Tommy Maitland that they're gonna pay from our city limits back down to forty-one also in the spring, we pay super, so it'll probably be a head bumping deal right there. And a comment on what he was saying about the cars, I know over in Madison area, the cops are writing tickets to Cleveland neighborhoods for parking in the yards. And I think what it comes from is submitted different ethnic people there, you know, you get one house, fifty, seventy-five people living in it, everybody's got a car. They probably don't pay no taxes, but they've got a car. And then the other thing, as far as being tatty, I got a neighbor that goes around his newspaper, and I've been there, I've been there since over three, and I take the time to go over while he's at work and cleaning his yard up, because I get tired of looking at it. I like the guy, I've had some differences with him, but, you know, I don't think that you're gonna be able to step in and start doing that. I mean, if you do, you're gonna have to go door to door and make everybody do it. And a statement I got from up here, what, out in the country area, you can't enforce a lot of stuff where you've got people, it's got cars sitting around their barns and that kind of stuff, although that kind of makes it country. But, you know, it's gonna be hard. I try to keep my property up, but, you know, when I have to help do somebody else's, got the same side of property that I've got, it's kind of hard. I don't mind doing it, because I'm retired, but I think you, it's kind of like owning an animal. If you have an animal, you need to take care of it. And he's gone off then, and he don't take care of nothing. So it's pretty bad when you mow around the place with paper in your yard. I mean, that's, that's pretty bad. But, and that's a fact. So, but I, I appreciate, I've been y'all living up here, and, you know, I appreciate everything the city has done, and I wouldn't go back to Davidson County for anything, except because I was a child of politics and city government, and I ain't never politician down there. I'm kinda like this guy under the president, his brain surgeon, he likes to go to Washington, because ain't nobody ever gained brains, and he liked to do his work. But, but I think all y'all, you serve and everything you do.
Thank you. You have a comment? I'll make a motion to close the meeting for a second. All right, first out.